Good afternoon. Welcome to the Joliet Junior College Regular Board of Trustee Meeting dated Wednesday, December 11, 2024. I'd like to call to order. As we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting will be conducted in accordance with Board Policy 01.45.00, Meetings of the Board, and Robert's Rules of Order. Our attorney, Brian Kolman, will serve as parliamentarian to ensure the meeting proceeds professionally. You'll notice that a staff member is present to assist with time management. Per policy, each trustee will have three minutes to speak and two minutes for rebuttal, which with continuous timing observed, and only one speaker holding the floor at a time. In alignment with Board Policy 01.03.00, I encourage everyone to maintain civility and respect even when expressing differing opinions. This commitment to civility is essential to fostering productive and respectful discussions. Karen, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Bradrick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn?
Present.
Is present virtual? Trustee Harris? Trustee Lee? Trustee Morales?
Present.
Trustee Stan Borski?
Present.
Trustee Queenie?
Here.
Trustee Bazinski?
Present.
We do have a quorum, and Nancy is virtual.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, pursuant to Policy 01.45.05, trustee Garcia provided a notice that she was unable to attend today because of work, and therefore she's being allowed to attend remotely under that policy. Thank you.
Yes. And we need to appoint a secretary pro temp in her absence?
Yes. That would, yeah. You don't need to, but it makes it easier with her not being here.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you need me to nominate someone?
No.
We need a motion to appoint a secretary pro temp.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Josh Dan Borski a secretary pro temp. I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Trustee Bradrick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Ginn?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.1.2, I want to welcome everyone to this meeting. It's in the afternoon. I can't promise we'll be out before it gets dark, but we're going to give it a try. Item 1.1.3, the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to call on former student trustee Ayesha Ellis, who's shaking her head no, to lead us into...
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the recovery for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Item 1.2, Communications. Kelly Roder Tannelli.
It's a pleasure to say good afternoon and happy holidays to you all. I'm ending this year in our communications section of the agenda with a very special partner, and one that we've been recently engaged with over the last few months in particular, and that is Constellation Energy. Constellation has plants across the country. They've got six in the state of Illinois, and actually two, Braidwood Clean Energy Center and the Dresden Clean Energy Center in our district. They do amazing things. They provide scholarships to our students. We have a joint dual enrollment advanced integrated maintenance program, which as of yesterday went from 12 students, which was kind of the goal, up to 22 students. In addition, they fund other scholarships for other programs, such as our Operations Engineering Technician Program, and contribute to our Polish Pebbles Program, which I know you all have heard about before at this meeting in terms of engaging young women in engineering field. So with that, I am pleased to introduce Sharon Johnson from Constellation Energy. She is their Government Affairs Manager.
Thank you, Kelly, for the wonderful introduction, and good afternoon, trustees and honored guests. My name is Sharon Johnson. I am responsible for the Braidwood and Dresden plants for Constellation Local Government Affairs. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to speak this afternoon. It's an honor to address such a dedicated group of major stakeholders, as Kelly mentioned, who reflect the same shared commitment that we have towards the mission and the goal and the vision for our regional group. Constellation is the nation's largest producer of carbon-free energy. We operate a total of six nuclear clean energy plants. We rebranded our plants from nuclear plants to clean energy plants in Illinois, and we are grateful for the solid partnership that we share with JJC. JJC and Constellation are entrusted with a great responsibility, going to be honest, to basically safeguard the values and the strategic direction for our shared goals that we have. Constellation represents the, recognizes rather, the fulfilling of the role that we effectively have to collaborate, have open dialogue, and an inclusive approach that includes the values and perspectives for your expertise as a fine institution like Joliet Junior College. So we are grateful for that, and individuals like yourselves who bring invaluable insights from different sectors of the community. So today, I'd like to start the agenda by reflecting on a couple of key milestones that we have and we've achieved together for the future that holds the excellence that we both share. So I'm excited to share that Constellation is a close partner with the college's selected missions, OET, the Operations Engineering Technician Program, run by Paul Cave. We've collaborated to help design the program, take interns in the summer, and we also hire many JJC graduates, so happy about that, among, upon completion. And Constellation and JJC enjoy the close partnership with the Dual AIM Advanced Integrated Maintenance, I wanted to get that right, Kelly, program. So we assist with the recruiting. We'll be giving six scholarships for students who continue their education at JJC, and Constellation plans to also take interns out of the program next year. Also, Constellation has donated roughly a total of over $62,000 to the JJC Foundation, and of this amount, about $60,000 came from our E2 Energy and Education Grants, which we use to offer STEM responsive or opportunities for middle-aged schoolgirls and build their own solar-powered cars, which is a lot of fun. So this year, Constellation also contributed about $1,000, as Kelly mentioned, to the Polish Pebbles Program managed by JJC's technical program. The remaining funds consist of matching gifts directly from our employees at Constellation. We value this very, very much, so we're very happy to do that. And it's through our continued constructive engagement that we'll strengthen our collective efforts. So in conclusion, I'm especially grateful for the diligent efforts of Doctors Numaua, Yolanda Farmer, and Amy Grant, and I want to say a special thanks to my friend for the opportunity for this address to Kelly. We share a strategic vision for what we look forward to in the future, and thank you all once again for your solid partnership. Have a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.3, Retirement Recognitions. Karen Kissel.
Thank you, Chairman Bazinski. Joliet Junior College recognizes and celebrates Kathy Boyes for her 13 and 1/2 years of dedicated service to Joliet Junior College, including eight, 11 and 1/2 years as a full-time food service worker. Throughout her time with the college, Kathy consistently demonstrated exceptional dependability and commitment. Her willingness to offer valuable input and innovative ideas to improve operations has left a lasting impact on the Food Service Department. Kathy took great pride in her work, performing her duties with professionalism and care. Kathy's dedication, positive contributions, and team spirit have been deeply appreciated by her managers and coworkers. She will be sincerely missed, and we extend our heartfelt gratitude for her years of service. We wish Kathy the very best in her retirement and the exciting opportunities that lie ahead for her.
Thank you. This time, I request a motion to accept the retirement recognition.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Item 1.4, Karen, do we have any public comments?
We do. But before we begin that, I just want to say as a reminder, Joliet Junior College welcomes public comments during its monthly board meeting. Per Policy 01.55.01, the purpose of this opportunity is to direct comments to the board. Keeping in mind that comments should be in good taste, and please demonstrate consideration for others. Please refrain from inappropriate, irrelevant, or disruptive comments. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Thank you for following this procedure. The first person we have is Tim Fitzgerald. He is a JJC alum, and he would like to address the board on board decorum and concerns about trustee behavior.
Hello, Board of Trustees. Dr. Numaua, members of the JJC community. I am a Joliet Junior College alum, concerned voting member of this district, here to address the disruptive and hostile behavior of trustee Michelle Lee. After trustee Lee censured at the August board meeting, she accused the board of failing to provide due process and specific evidence regarding negative disparaging comments she made. However, her accusations against the JJC president, board chair, and vice chair are themselves disparaging and border-on defamation. Her allegations also lack the evidence she claims the board denied her. Additionally, her participation in board meetings has increasingly focused on retaliatory lawsuits. She often reads prepared statements filled with misinformation that exceeds her allotted time, disregards points of order, and speaks over fellow board members. Her behavior becomes louder and more disruptive when colleagues attempt to restore decorum. These actions are well documented in publicly accessible board meeting videos. Now, of greater concern to me is her behavior towards JG student trustee and JJC students in general, which is an embarrassment to the college and, as a father, completely unacceptable. To add to the numerous examples given during public comments at previous board meetings, she exhibits condescending and intimidating behaviors, such as addressing students as sweetie, glaring at them. At the September board meeting during the Title IX policy discussion, trustee Lee interrupted trustee Lee, or trustee Queenie several times, made false statements, and directed snide comments to them. In an added display of disrespect, trustee Lee left the meeting before the student trustee report and before the meeting concluded, something she has done on multiple occasions, like her outburst at the end of the November meeting, which she stated that she doesn't need to attend closed session on the advice of her attorney, a threat of another lawsuit, perhaps. Also, at the November board meeting, trustee Lee refused to address trustee, student trustee Queenie by the preferred pronouns and mockingly misused them, a clear form of disrespect that indicates an inability to serve all JJC students effectively. In conclusion, I'm here to express a vote of no confidence in trustee Michelle Lee. Her disruptive, disrespectful, and competitive presence, along with her lawsuits and outbursts, are exhausting and unacceptable. Her behavior exhibits little connection to JJC students or respect for the position she holds on this board. I fully support the good standing clause for board representation, and it's not subjective. It is obvious who on this board is serious about serving JJC students' best interests, the campus community, and the business of the college, and who is more focused on creating chaos and seeking personal gain. I recommend that trustee Lee reread JJC's core values and ask herself who she serves. Thank you very much for your time.
We do have a second one from Luke Galloway, and he wants to speak regarding the relationship between students and school administration.
Hello, JJC community, President Numaua, the esteemed board. Happy holidays. I want to speak again about the relationship between the students and the school administration. When I stood at this podium last time, I spoke about how the student voice is always the most important in this room. I spoke about how the students are the most important stakeholders of this institution, about how the students seek to impact substantive change, speak up for accountability. Since the last meeting, I've been approached by people, some of them I've never met. These were students, staff and faculty, community members, candidates for the April elections, thanking me and telling me how much my speech meant to them, and that has meant so much to me. And that's not to speak self-aggrandizingly. The student voice is so much bigger than me. The students are stressed. We're in finals week right now, and I'd like to wish best of luck to my fellow students on their finals. But in spite of the stress, the state of student leadership is strong. The students are still watching, and whether we're visible and force for every meeting or not, the students will survive any short-term adversity. There will always be students. If this semester has proven anything, you can think you're invincible. You can try to outrun inevitability, but the students are a constant. The students are the heart and soul of this institution, and when a student stands at this podium, we are their heartbeat. We spent a lot of this semester talking about women's issues. I wasn't able to address Title IX last time, given time constraints. Let me tell you something about me. I come from a long lineage of strong women in my family. My great-grandmother had the arduous task of raising her daughters alone after she was widowed. This was in 1950s, the 1960s, when it was very hard for women to be ahead of household, and yet she overcame adversity. My grandmother continues that strength, and my mother, who was also a single mother, who is sitting at home watching me speak right now, continues that strength. And now that strength continues through me. With that in mind, I'm not going to pretend that I can speak for our women students, which, by the way, according to the institutional statistics and the 10th-day census, represent a majority of our students. But I can say this: The students as a whole overwhelmingly support our student trustee, overwhelmingly support our president, and they overwhelmingly support Title IX. And I'm proud that we passed additions to the policy this semester. What we saw at the previous meeting, when a trustee took this podium for their own public comment, was an appalling abuse of authority. The number we have to remember is 19, 19 times. 19 times the points of order were issued and ignored, and then after that episode, to disrespect the moment of silence, to disrespect the faculty president, to continue to disrespect our student trustee was appalling. So with all that in mind, I will continue to drive 30 minutes, an hour away, to every single board meeting that I see to empower you as board members to do the right thing. As long as the students are empowered to speak, we're on the right path. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1.5, A Moment of Silence. Dr. Numaua.
Chairman Bazinski and members of the board and the college community, I'm asking you to join me in a moment of silence for the following individuals. Lorraine Mazinski, mother to JJC Culinary Arts chef-instructor professor Mark Mazinski; Aaron Opah, son of David Opah, professor in our Natural Sciences Department; Caleb Counterman, GEDC board member and Grundy County board member; and Dori Schobert-Benay, wife of Chris Benay, automotive service adjunct and retired automotive shop manager.
Thank you, Dr. Numaua.
Thank you, Chairman.
Item 1.6, Selected Reports. 1.6.1, The Federal Government's Role Report. Dr. Klein Numaua and Dr. Yolanda Farmer.
Thank you, Chairman. And as this is coming up, you know, this is a version of a presentation that the greater college community will receive upon our return from break at spring convocation, but there's been tremendous, significant interest in the influence of the federal government, certainly the results of the election and the transition from the Biden administration to the Trump administration. So I wanted to share, you know, just some things with this group, and, you know, for the trustees who've traveled to Springfield in support of the college, traveled to Washington, DC in support of the college, you know, some of these things might not be new to you, but for those here today, I think it's really important to understand the role of the federal government in what we do. Prior to the election, my office sent a college-wide, community-wide communication, as some of the rhetoric on the campaign trail had, you know, disturbed some of our students and some of our employees. So we'll cover that in a little bit, but I wanted to start my presentation with just the concept that politics and the rhetoric need to be converted into policy. The policy then needs to be converted into, in some cases, legislation, but into practice. Okay? So we'll start there, and I start there because oftentimes, what's said on the campaign trail, the politics of it all, the rhetoric of it all, does not get to the policy stage, might never get to the practice stage, might never make its way into legislation. Nonetheless, it is still important to acknowledge the role of the federal government, and we'll be breaking it down into different sections here. Down at the bottom, of course, the Department of Education, the Office of Civil Rights, and federal student aid will kind of, you know, break down each one of those. The greatest piece of regulation, the greatest, most significant influential piece of legislation was passed in the mid-'60s, the Higher Education Act, and it has since been reauthorized many, many times. And as it's reauthorized, you know, there's debate in terms of those changes, but there's a process that the debate needs to follow, a rule-making process, and we'll get into it in a little bit. In a couple of slides, I'll share some numbers related to federal student aid, and again, for those who've lobbied on behalf of JJC, these numbers won't be new, but some of them will be updated. The Civil Rights Act, Title VII specifically, and the provisions under Title VII, of course, protect employees, determine protected classes, and relatedly, of course, here on our college campus, Title IX and its protections that Title IX lays out are critically important, and this board has recognized that, passed rules and policies, and the administration has created procedures to follow that align with any modifications that any particular federal administration has put forth, changes to. And let me take a step back. So as changes happen to Title IX and Title VII, those are not magic wand, executive branch changes. In the mid-'40s, oh gosh, sorry to go back this far, but in the mid-'40s, there was a piece of legislation federally passed called the Admissions Administrative Procedures Act, and what that did is it set forth some checks and balances on legislative and administrative executive branch power, if you will. So let's take Title IX specifically. So when President Biden was elected, nearly three and 1/2 years later, colleges and universities across the country had to align their policies and procedures to the new Biden administration's Title IX regulations. So consider that, just happened in August. Okay? So just think about that timeline a little bit. Those rules were introduced when President Biden was first elected, and here we are in August 24, having to implement, implementing those regulations. That process, that three, three-and-1/2-year process, is outlined in the Administrative Procedures Act passed in the mid-'40s. So that's a check and balance. If any administration is interested in changing any aspect of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, that administration, Biden or Trump, one side or the other, must follow rules and the regulations set forth in the Administrative Procedures Act. Does that make sense, trustees? Okay. So we'll start there, and then, you know, we'll get into it at a later date as we actually transition from one administration to another. The Higher Education Act also outlines a process for accreditation. Now, any accreditation expert, scholars would most likely look at this slide and dissect the word "regional," because technically, these accrediting bodies, of which there are six across the country, divide the country into six regions, are no longer regional. In fact, a university like the University of Arizona, go Wildcats, can actually pick up and leave the Higher Learning Commission's accrediting body geographic agency and move to another accrediting body. That's something new, and the Supreme Court has decided that. Okay? Now, we, of course, are in a Higher Learning Commission's area. It's no longer a region. You know, geographically, there's no longer the 19-state region of HLC. HLC now covers the entire country. Okay? So accreditation is an important part of what we do for a couple of reasons. Number one, quality control. All right? Your degrees should be worth something. There should be a rigorous process that, by which, you know, we determine that the outcomes set forth that we claim to provide our students are actually happening. So quality control is important. Next, and this is a good transition, I think, to the next couple of slides. HLC is the gatekeeper for federal financial aid. If we lose accreditation, we lose the ability to offer federal financial aid. Right? We'll get into the numbers in just a little bit. Now, of course, one of our legislative priorities, along with the ICCTA, along with any organization that cares about community colleges, is that we remain locally controlled. But we are heavily impacted in different ways. The first two bullet points I've mentioned, the third bullet point I mentioned as well, and we're going to provide some numbers here in a little bit, so let's do that. All right? I'm going to sit on this just a little bit, let this digest, let you absorb some of the numbers, because for those of you who are in a position to advocate trustees for the college, and many of you have, and trustee Stan Borski, trustee Broderick have been to DC in support of the college, trustee Queenie down to Springfield, I think it's important to understand a couple of things. I'm going to start with the bottom two numbers. Max Pell grant available to our students is $7,395. The Max MAP grant, thankful to the state of Illinois, thankful to be in a state that values higher education and supports its students. A full-time tuition at JJC, tuition and fees, is about $4,500. So just let that number sit with you as well. So let's go from there. Okay? Let's go up a little bit. Actually, let's go to the pie chart. So over on the right-hand side, we've got 75.8% of our students, right? Three-quarters of our student accessing either Pell or MAP. How many students receive Pell? 31% of our students, nearly one in every three students receives the Pell grant, the federal Pell grant. 27% of our students access statewide support. Okay? So let's put all of that into perspective. I'm going to give you a number that's not on this, but as we navigate, you know, the lobbying and all we do and federal policies and the influence of the federal government, I think it's important for the trustees to understand that approximately $10 million annually flows through JJC to our students in the form of Pell grants. Okay? So this fall alone, that number's 7.3 million. Okay? So let's just sit with that a little bit, and I'm going to direct your attention back to some of these percentages. Okay? Because most likely, some of you are thinking, this year seems higher. Right? If you look at those numbers, 75%, much higher than 55%, 27%, much higher than 17%, 31% and 21%. I'm going to sit with that a little bit, and I'll reveal the reason why at the end. So not only do our students directly benefit from federal government support, but the college itself receives $5.27 million from the federal government through different grants. Many of our structures, many of our offices, many of the things that we are able to do, services we're able to provide students, are funded by the federal government. Examples of those include Carl Perkins and CTE. Carl Perkins legislation outlines 16 different career clusters, all of the programs in our technical departments, some of the programs in our CIS department and cybersecurity department, some of the programs in our business department as well. Additionally, Trio, WIOA, and many other federal pieces of legislation that send money and resources to JJC. And of course, state support as well. Many of you saw social media recently. We've highlighted our receipt award of the CJA Joliet Hub Grant, so I anticipate we'll be very successful there. Just want to put, kind of, have something for trustees for you to compare, federal government and state support. You know, I won't go into this too much, accreditation. There have been some proposed changes to accreditation, nothing enough to comment on at this point. One thing's for sure: We will continue to apply rigorous standards to what we do from a curriculum standpoint, from a programmatic standpoint, from the distribution of financial aid, and... There have been some proposed changes to accreditation, nothing enough to comment on at this point. One thing's for sure, we will continue to apply rigorous standards to what we do from a curriculum standpoint, from a programmatic standpoint, from the distribution of financial aid, and appreciate community support. Trustees appreciate all of your support, challenging us to be the best administrators of higher education possible. And over the last several years, as equity-related initiatives have, you know, I could choose better words, but I'm going to use the phrase "under attack" across the country. You know, I'm thankful to be here at JJC where, you know, we aspire to maximize our impact on diverse populations. We strive to achieve equitable outcomes for our students, have been nationally awarded and recognized as such, and we remain committed to creating and maintaining inclusive spaces and supported by this board, by the college community, to ensure we're offering the absolute best environment possible, or best learning environment possible for our students. And to the JJ community, I think, you know, it's very clear, the artifacts of that vision, what I just articulated, are all around, and we will remain committed to these initiatives. Lastly, just a shout out to everyone who, you know, is interested in this topic. I understand there are some concerns among the college community. When we come back from spring convocation, I suspect we'll have more information on what the transition from one administration to another might mean. And just a final thought is, we will remain committed to our core values, and we will move forward with those core values in mind. And, you know, Chairman, with that, I'll yield back. So thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Happy to take questions as well.
Thank you, Dr. Nimmo.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions.
No questions here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions.
We do expect more to come, though, after January, I would expect, correct?
Yeah.
Is that changes to it?
Yeah. I expect so, and we'll have more of a sense, Trustee Broderick, as January 20th approaches and how, you know, the transition might impact some of the things we're doing. So thank you.
Yeah, because I think we're all interested in that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 1.6.2, the Faculty Union Report. Kurt Ward, please.
Good afternoon.
Dr. Marsink is currently giving a final exam, so I'm sure he's dealing with a group of students with a raised stress level right now, which is a common theme this week. But I'm honored to report on his behalf. And I want to begin by giving a shout out to our faculty. I think that's really important here during finals week. I believe that we would all agree, this has been a unique semester. I mean, if you were the culinary arts instructor and you suddenly found out, as an example, that your kitchen is not available for half of the semester, and you successfully delivered a class, that's nothing short of awesome. And the reality is, that's just one of many examples on this campus. And I would be remiss if I didn't also give a shout out to the faculty and the administration. You know, it's one thing to change your curriculum, but it takes a whole lot of other people to make all the logistical changes, right? And without them, the academics, it really wouldn't matter, right? And then I think, most importantly, I got to give a shout out to our students and their flexibility to shift to a different mode of learning. It might not even have been their favorite mode of learning, but you got it done. Right? And I think with the words of former First Lady and Secretary of State, Ms. Clinton, and she said, "It takes a village." And I think that's what we have right here, is a village that makes it happen. Right? So with that, I'm just going to wish the students the best of the week. I realize that your stress level is at a level beyond what's a normal stress level. And hopefully, after this week, you can turn off your computer, turn off your email, and take a week or so, and just enjoy life, and we will be excited to see you back in our classrooms, ready to go in January. With that, happy holidays.
Thank you.
Happy holidays. Thank you.
Item 1.6.3, the Adjunct Faculty Union Report will not be given, most likely due to the same final schedule that the rest of the staff is on. Item 1.6.4, JJC Foundation Report. Kristi Mulvey, please.
The last couple months, meetings, I haven't had a report, so I've got a few things to go through, but I don't want to have this too lengthy. So as you can see in front of you, I gave you the information here, so I'm just going to refer to it quickly. But I guess it's the end of a calendar year for us, and our office is very busy right now, because usually donors make their charitable giving by the end of the year. So between selling raffle tickets for the holiday party tomorrow for Dr. Nimmo's First Generation Scholarship, and donors giving to the foundation to support the college, my office is extremely busy. But I wanted to share just a few numbers of giving for you in this past year. We presented those at our annual meeting to the foundation. Through our alumni giving program, we've had an increase in the past year of 69%. 605 alumni gave a total of $648,000 to the college, which is a 37% increase in total giving from alumni. Giving from friends includes donors. Number of donors is 749, which is a 55% increase, and our total giving just from friends of the college, not including alumni or employees, was $325,000 for the last year. Corporate foundation and organizational giving is up 55% with a total giving of $626,000. And then one of the things that I think is really important to me as an employee of the college is that we have 420 employees here at the college that give to the foundation to support various scholarships in their departments, and the employees together this past year increased the giving 14% for a total of $129,000 they're giving back to the college. So that says a lot to me, and I'm proud to work with a group of employees that understand how important it is to give to the college. As you know, it's kind of, we've been advertising that we've hit a huge milestone with scholarship awards. This is the last three years, and I'm proud to say that last academic year, we hit $1 million of scholarships to our students. I'm really excited. Last fall, we were at $971,000, so we already know we're going to far surpass this amount for spring, once those dollars are on the student accounts. The scholarship application process closed. We're ready to score. Once the grades, they've taken their finals, the grades are uploaded, we're going to start scoring on January 2nd. And our promise to all of the students is that we get that money for spring semester on their account, so that if, that's not going to be a deterrent for them to come and attend the college. You don't have to read them all, but they're there if you have time. Since January of 2023, my staff and I have brought in 27 new scholarships. Most of those are endowments, which is a minimum of $30,000, and we don't ever touch the principal of that amount, so those endowed scholarships will be here from 100 years from now, supporting our students. I encourage you to, I've got the QR code if you haven't already listened to Jen Davis' alumni podcast. We've done several of them. We do one each month with a various array of subjects. They're very interesting, and I encourage you to use the QR code and sign up to listen to those. They're very interesting, and they're very entertaining, and I want to thank Jen for starting this initiative. It really is great, and it supports our alumni program. Most importantly, I'm proud to introduce to you Dr. Curtis J. Crawford and his wife, Gina, who gave the college recently $1.8 million. And because of this couple that live in California, he's an alum of the college, we will have an honors college that opens in the fall of 2025. His gift for almost $2 million is supporting a build-out in our second-floor library here, and it will endow a lot of money for students to support scholarships. I'm not going to go through the criteria, but it's listed above, right here and in your packet. This program will be for our high-achieving students. As you know, 80%, maybe 85% of our scholarships are for just financial need students, but this is going to be for our high-achieving academic students. We're hoping to have a diverse population of those. It's going to start at a 3.8 grade point average, but these students that qualify for our honors college will go to school for free. Books, tuition, fees for free, the whole two years that they're here. They will also have a required capstone project that mirrors honors programs at four-year schools. They will be able to study abroad for free, and they will be able to enter into research projects. So I'm really excited about this. This alum has really given a gift to the college that brings us to the next level. There's maybe only 10 community colleges in the United States that have honors colleges, not just a honors program. So I want to thank the people at JJC that helped me with this. Dr. Yolanda Farmer was at the table for this negotiation, along with Jack Haynes, who is the faculty advisor for honors, and Dr. Amy Gray, who is our Vice President of Academic Affairs, and Erin Farmer, who is the manager over that program. We're really excited about this. We're going to break ground and open the center, but we're going to start looking for those students in January. So right now, I've gone out, I'm sending out information to 26 of our feeder high schools and getting that information to all of them, and inviting those counselors to identify the students that will qualify for this, so that they choose JJC when they graduate. We always like a good celebration. As you know, my office is the hub of all things fun and activities and bringing money in for the students. Here's some dates that you can get on your calendars ahead of time. You know, we have our alumni networking events and things like that. Our next event coming up after the holidays is the JJC SOC Campaign, and I'm pleased to show you our SOC campaign. It's kind of neat, a constellation was here today, but we have the Portable Planetarium, as you know, going out, which is a big outreach to our schools. So this year, SOCs are stars, and we think our students are stars. We think the employees here are stars, and we hope our students always reach for the stars. So starting in February, the SOCs are going to be a constellation pattern for this year. And then, on behalf of my staff and institutional investment, foundation, and grants, I wish all of you a happy holiday. If you have any questions, you can ask them now. Yes.
So I know the SOCs are usually part of a fundraising campaign. How much will they be sold for this year?
They're usually $10, because they're really good quality. Dr. Nimmo wears them a lot, wears them often, but they're $10, and all the money goes to our alumni program and goes to students for scholarships.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. This is the end of my report. Thank you.
Item 1.6.5, Building and Ground Committee Report. I understand there was no meeting, or do you have a report?
There was no meeting, no. No report.
Thank you. Item 1.6.6, the Board Policy Committee Report. Nancy Garcia, again.
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you're doing well, and your families are doing well as well. So our policy committee did meet with Ryan Queenie and Trustee Ryan Queenie and Trustee Diane Harris. So there's going to be a few things that you're going to see in your packet that is going to be part of our new business and old business. One of the things that I do want to bring to your attention is going to be an item that is going to be part of the first reading, that is going to be item 4.1.1 or policy 13.04.00. This one is the sale and disposal of college property. This is a policy that we have been going back and forth in terms of making sure that the language makes sense for the needs of the college, and it also provides clarity in terms of our process. So for this particular policy, you will notice that it still keeps the language around that the policy that the Board of Trustees has to be able to approve, any sale of any items. However, there's two different types of items that we have here. For damaged properties, there's a different process, and also for items that are undamaged and ready to be sold, there will be a slightly different process, but all of that information is outlined in the policy in front of you. The other policies that I can reference is policies that you have in your book that are up for second reading. These are policies that we have already spoken about last month and address any questions or concerns or feedback, but you will notice that in a lot of the policies here that are up for second reading, it contains the language about, trust me, that is in good standing, and what that actually means. And it breaks down a little bit of additional information about the process and the different policies in terms of trustee development budget, and also board travel. So all of this would be up for second reading, and this is something that we'll talk about later in the meeting during new business and old business. Thank you. Trustee Queenie, is there anything that you would like to add?
Nothing from the report. I do want to add that later on, when we are talking about policies, there is one policy from second reading that we want to pull back to Policy Committee, but I'll bring that back later.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Nancy. Item 1.6.7, the Finance Committee Report.
There was no meeting in December. We will be meeting in January, however. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 1.6.8, the President's Report. Dr. Klein-Nimmo.
Thank you, Chairman Budzinski, and members of the board and the college community. As my presentation makes its way up there, and I gave a little bit of a teaser during the federal government presentation and failed to issue the punchline, but, so here's the punchline. I think it's really important, especially trustees, for you to understand why those numbers increased. And I'm going to take a line from a friend of JJC, Dr. Lynn Tinter-Ladner, who's the president and CEO of Phi Theta Kappa National Two-Year Honor Society, who's been traveling in support of this concept, and we're finally seeing it happen at the federal level. And I'll use some of her gestures. So when she describes federal financial aid, you know, oftentimes, this gets the most press, this being, you know, gesturing from low to high. And that's in reference to the maximum Pell Grant award per student, which you saw that number up on the screen earlier. But really, the focus is this way, wide, right? And that references eligibility. And so that's what we've seen, and that's why those numbers are higher this year, is we've seen not only an increase this way, up and down, but an increase sideways as well. More students are now eligible because with the FASDA simplification process, expected family contribution has been converted to student aid indexed, resulting in more students being eligible for federal financial aid. I do want to give just a quick shout out to Trustee Harris. Trustee Harris was appointed to serve on the ACCT, the National Organization of Trustees' Public Policy and Advocacy Committee. Her term on the committee will begin immediately and expire at the 2025 Leadership Congress in New Orleans, so just want to give a quick shout out to Trustee Harris. Chairman, tomorrow, I will be on the Community College Voice Podcast. It's a podcast run by the American Association of Community Colleges to talk about how JJC is using design thinking to implement many of our key initiatives. I also want to take a moment. This is his first board meeting. He was officially approved last month. We officially have a new vice president for student development. Trustees, will you join me in welcoming? And Dr. Brooks, if you're able to do so, please rise to be recognized, Dr. Carl Brooks. And I think it's also important for us to acknowledge the tremendous effort of Bob Morris, who sat in that seat as an interim for many, many months, working to stabilize some of the operations in our already high-functioning student development area. So I just want to publicly acknowledge Bob's contributions to JJC. He will continue in his role as the Dean of Enrollment Management and other things, and I look forward to his continued contributions. Trustees, you see before you, thank you. Thank you, Bob. Trustees, you see before you here, Coinsetas from the JJC Horticulture Office. Trustees, you see before you here, poinsettias from the JJC Horticulture Office. And for those of you interested in more, they're selling them down in the bookstore, which is new collaboration that they've got there. You know, Sharon Johnson, just a shout out to Sharon. And I do want to let the trustees know Sharon is actually a member of the Grundy Expansion Team as well. You know, so as we move forward, you know, Sharon will continue to ensure that we're optimizing our mix of services and program offerings in the Grundy County area. Just really appreciate not only Sharon, Caroline Joseph, who's the VP over the region. Hardik Patel is the plant manager down at Dresden. So both gave an outstanding state of the plant address and I was joined by KRT and Dr. Farmer there. But Chairman, I normally give just a quick enrollment update. We'll be, the president's report will be transitioning formats in January. It'll look a little bit different, but I thought we'd start to formalize just the enrollment portion of this report and spend just a little bit of time, not a lot. But as we're concluding the fall semester and our numbers are pretty final, you could see here that we were up 7% this year. Credit hour production, we were up 6%. And as many of you know, most of that was in the dual credit area as we saw tremendous increase from 16,887 credit hours produced to 19,000, nearly 19,500. And we're ended, we ended rather at 15% increase for the fall. Now, looking forward to the spring, far too early to make, you know, any final judgments here, but our spring numbers are relatively flat at this point. Just wanted to give the board just a quick update on where we are in terms of spring numbers. We're up a little bit. In terms of headcount, we're down a little bit in terms of credit hour production. But of course, nowhere near the start of the spring semester there. Probably a little bit more than a month away at this point. You know, again, being part of a state that has such a great support network, whether it be the Illinois Community College Council of Administrators that works to support VPs and deans across the state. These five presidents have been very supportive of me, chairman, as I've kind of made my way throughout the state. You've got Dr. Cornille at Heartland, Dr. Lau at Parkland, you've got Seamus Riley, you've got George Evans, who also sits on the ICCB Board, and Dr. Mike Boyd, who's the president of Cankey Key Community College. We served on a panel of presidents talking about, you know, the challenges, opportunities, and what a modern presidency really looks like at the administrator's conference. Excuse me, I just want to send a quick shout out to them and thank them for their support as I've transitioned from Arizona to here in Illinois. But trustees, the presidents have finalized our legislative agenda and to no one's surprise, especially anyone associated with Trustees Association, it aligns very closely with the Trustees Association's legislative priorities. So I won't talk about each one of these in detail. I'll highlight local control is always there. That's critically important. We've got a board of seven locally elected trustees. We've got a student trustee and local control remains a critical priorities for the presidents and I understand for the trustees as well. But I do want to give you a bit of a heads up. And as this rolls out, I'm just considering right now, at this point, it's pretty far along, but there are certain elements that I just can't share just yet because they're not quite ready. And that's the applied bachelor's degree. So there's a group getting together as a president's council, a group of six presidents, and strategically sort of across, spread out across the state. I'm leading that group and our work that we're doing as part of that task force is due on December 15th, I believe. So over the last couple of weeks, we've been asked by the Greater Presidents Council to determine the feasibility of bachelor's degrees at community colleges. And if we've determined that it is in fact feasible, maybe if not for all, for some, what programs might be impacted by this initiative? So as many of you know, I was part of this initiative in Arizona. I hope to bring that experience here to Illinois. Some more to come on that, but I'm very optimistic and very hopeful at this point for that specific initiative. And just as I've traveled around the district from last meeting to this meeting, many of you know I serve on the board at the YMCA. Shorewood YMCA had its groundbreaking. So just want to give a shout out to Katie Leclerc, my fellow board members there, C.C. Debold, mayor of Shorewood. A really exciting initiative for Shorewood and to be at that place and that point in the process is very, very exciting. We host the Teen Reach Camp here on campus and have a strong partnership with the YMCA and are very proud of that partnership. In the upper left-hand corner, I just want to, trustee Morales, I believe, connected me initially to Eric and Brenda. They run an organization called Fighting Chance. So I had an opportunity to spend time with the students who participate in their program. This is an entity that exists sort of on the east side of Joliet. And kids, honestly, they just reminded me of myself when I was that age, trying to find a place to, you know, play basketball, be active, stay out of trouble. And that's what Eric and Brenda do. And again, the organization is called Fighting Chance. So just want to give a huge shout out. Eric actually played football for JJC. And so when he visited here, he shared a lot of different stories. And chairman and trustees, in the lower right-hand corner, Dr. Ostwinkel, student trustee Ryan Queenie and I, and some of the members of the audience had a chance to participate in, you know, let's see. It's a celebration really of World AIDS Day, which every year is on December 1st. So we were in the audience for, I think, the second annual, perhaps the third annual drag show that we run in celebration and recognition of members of our community who have been impacted by HIV or AIDS. There may have been a rendition of Meli Kaliki Maka at Joliet Rotary this year, chairman, but I'm not willing to share any more details on that. So I'm going to fast forward through this slide. Did I hear a boo in the audience? Like, I refuse to sing Meli Kaliki Maka with all of you. But let me just acknowledge, you know, on July 14th, we suffered some severe damage that took the city center offline. Kurt Ward referenced this in his remarks earlier, highlighting, you know, the efforts of our culinary arts chef instructors. We took some time yesterday to acknowledge the tremendous efforts of those in our facilities and maintenance area to go from building offline July 14th to building online September 16th, thanks in part to this board authorizing the expense for those dog houses, if you'll remember, to repair our HVAC system on our roof there. Really Kurt was right. It does take a village. It took all of us. I just want to acknowledge the efforts and leadership of Karen Kissel. I want to acknowledge the leadership of Pat Van Dyne especially. You know, they were up on the roof. I mean, Pat was up on the roof on July 14th, sort of directing all of the staff there and coming up with the plan. And a triage is probably a good term for what happened on that particular day. But to go from July 14th to September 16th was really a tremendous effort. And this was an effort on the part of the administration to acknowledge all of those great things, right? So can we get a hand for the city center? Thanks, staff. And with that, chairman, you know, I want to wish you and the trustees just happy holidays. Wish you all just the absolute very best. Thankful again for, you know, what we're about to experience tomorrow at the holiday party in support of my scholarship. And chairman, you know, lastly, just in terms of your leadership, I just wanted to acknowledge the statement you read at the beginning of this meeting and how you've worked collaboratively with the board to optimize the operations of the board, to ensure the board operates as a model policy governance entity. And that statement in particular, I thought, was spot on. So to the college community, happy holidays to you all. Thank you, chairman.
So somebody in that last picture has a video of you singing though, right? I just want to know who to call.
Yeah, no comment, no comment.
Item 1.7, the board is now going to go into closed session. I need a motion for the closed session under 2C1, 2C8, and 2C11?
So moved?
Second.
Wait, and 2C6.
And 2C6.
Okay, now we can move.
A motion to go into closed session for 2C1, 2C6, 2C8, and 2C11.
So moved?
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome back, everyone. We're going to return to our agenda. Item 1.8, I need a motion to return to public session.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
End the roll, please.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and for the record, Diane Harris is now in attendance.
Thank you, Diane.
You're welcome.
Item 1.9.1, the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on November 13th, 2024. So moved?
Second.
I do have some concerns in the, under the finance audit report. I did ask about the reserves. I don't see anything mentioned in there. I'm with the auditor at Comback saying in regards to the reserves. And I'm looking at questions asked about the city chiller that we were a little over budget, but I don't see anything in that statement on page five. And I would love to know under what Supreme Court case it was. I asked Josh and it's mentioned, but it doesn't tell me what the Supreme Court is so that we can look at it. It's referred to it, but what is it about? What's the name of it, Josh? Do you know?
The 2021 Houston v, I think, Houston v, if I recall. Reach out to me over email and I'll send it to you.
I'd like it added in here because it just says some creed thing, Supreme Court, a community college in Houston. I think we need, should have it referenced. That's why I'm asking.
Sure, awesome.
Okay. And then in the update area, I think it's, she also had concerns about Dr. Namua's contract not being sent to trustees within the 48 hours of the meeting. It wasn't being sent to the trustees 48 hours. So I thought the word "not" should be in there. And I am a little concerned about the personal comments made by all of the attendees. Well, I know it's good to have it, but sometimes all of those, most, all of those statements can convolute and create the ongoing dysfunctionality sometimes that we're experiencing here. So I am going to say, I do question if we could see these minutes ahead of time so we can make comments prior to, that would be great.
Any other discussion on the minutes? We're ready to vote.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
No.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.10, approval of the agenda. Require a motion for, in a second, to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved?
Second.
End the vote, please.
Is there, was there any additions to it? Because I understand that you were going to allow us to talk about something in regards to the ACCT.
That's in your trustee updates at the end. Was that put into the agenda, Karen?
It wasn't specifically identified, no, but we did agree to allow extra time.
So for the reports at the end, it says, I'm asking you to use this time, if you haven't already done so, to give a quick synopsis of what you learned at the ACCT conference you attended in October.
I may real quick. I thought that we would get an extra couple of minutes on top of the report.
Yeah, we'll have some leeway in that.
Gotcha, okay. As long as it's enough for us to get the reports, we're good.
Are we ready to vote and approval of the agenda?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, I know? Motion carries.
Item 1.11, approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
Second.
I'd like to have certain things brought out. 3.1, 3.2, 3.1. What did you say?
We need a motion, correct, before we start pulling items?
Yeah, we did.
We did. We had one.
Okay, did we get a second? Sorry, I might have missed it.
We did.
Okay, thank you.
Item 3.1 and then 3.?
3.2, 3.1, 4.2, 3.1, 4.2, 2.2, 4.2, 3.1, 4.2, 4.4, 4.2, 5.1, 4.2, 8.1, and 4.3.
I'd also like to poll policy 4.2.13, or item 4.2.13, policy 1104.00.
Which one are you pulling, trustee Queenie?
4.213.
Okay, so are we ready to vote on everything other than what's been polled on the rest of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again?
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, first polled item 3.1. Approval to pay the listing of bills for the period ending November 30th, 2024 as presented.
We need a motion, a second.
So moved?
Second.
My question again is on KGG bills of 21,650. And I've gone through all of the bills and I went through the contract. And each month I ask for a copy of the bills and it seems like I'm getting more redactions. And I don't understand why I'm getting redactions when we as the board that hired council should be entitled to see. And I'm looking at everything prior to, nothing was redacted until I've been asking the last four months, more has been redacted. I looked at the contract and there's nothing in the contract that states about redaction to the employer. So I'm questioning part of it as an ethic issue to see if there is a reason why we are getting redacted and the 21,000. Because in the contract of the RFP, it says that he was, the attorney firm would help us reduce legal costs. And I don't know, I keep seeing legal costs going up. I'm bringing that to your attention.
Maureen, I believe last time I mentioned that legal costs go up because of all the headlines and the lawsuits that you have filed to the college and he's been working on a lot. That creates a lot of work and billable hours. So that is costing taxpayer money every time you decide to sue the college.
Well, every time you decide to violate the OMA Act, then that causes.
We did not and it was dropped.
Yes, you did.
It was dropped, Maureen.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, my God.
Well, we'll rely on the state for that opinion. Any other question regarding listing of bills? Ready to vote, please.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
No.
Trustee Garcia again? Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 3.2.1, the bid for the graduation setup and rentals. Need a motion.
So moved?
Second.
My question is, we just got this today and it shows that we had two BEP contractors. Is this satisfying part of what we're doing in regards to the BEP? Are we meeting the ability to have those types of things? Because this is the big topic that's on BEP. Can anybody answer that one?
Chairman Budzinski and trustee Bradrick, I'll put Karen Kissel on the, on deck for this one, but just offer a couple of comments and appreciate, you know, the opportunity to highlight JJC's success in this space.
Which I understand.
Yeah, and most recently we have kind of finalized our report for the latest fiscal year and it'll be something to celebrate. It's not quite ready for. And it'll be something to celebrate. It's not quite ready for, you know, publication just yet. But I just want to ask Karen to kind of talk about some of the things we do in the BEP space to increase the number of BEP vendors who respond to our solicitations. Because some of the things we're doing are are significant to place us as kind of a statewide leader. Go ahead, Karen.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Namua. This does satisfy the requirement, so we're fine in terms of this purchase. But the Joliet Junior College purchasing team has really been a leader in the community college and even in the Illinois public space in reaching out to different BEP vendors to try to, you know, develop a community of vendors across the state to be able to bid on different types of purchases that we're offering out. So in terms of, you know, reaching out to our collective BEP vendors via email to identify when we have different purchases, putting it on a website, putting it in the newspaper, and advocating with other community colleges and other state procurement officers. Where we have been able to really be, you know, haven't met our total goal, but really have seen increases in the number of BEP vendors that we're doing business with and the total dollar amount. So that's something that I know Dr. Namua referenced, but we'll be able to share that too when everything's final.
And that's good because the ICCTA is also, that's one of our main goals, is to work with the BEP because we had that as our CEO produced it last month, or last period. He told us all about what we're doing and what we need to do and work with. And we're working with one of the trustees from Marin Valley that's involved in it, too. I just wanted to make sure that we were doing what we needed to do for the BEP.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We're ready for a vote.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
Yes.
Trustee Garcia again. I believe she's left. She left the meeting. Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Bezansky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second reading and approval of board policies. Pulled item 4.2.1, officers of the board. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
My question on this policy is, I don't see anything mentioned in there on discussion on board succession, which has become a big hot topic with the community colleges in Illinois. They like to see some type of succession identified, not just that the same person can run again. So I would ask and recommend that that add be added into it, maybe go back to policy and have something of a discussion of succession.
Any other comments? Believe we're ready to vote on that, Karen?
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
No.
Trustee Harris.
I'm sorry, I slipped. I should have said that we could take a look at that, but since I didn't, I'll vote for it. Yes.
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 Trustee Queenie.
I'm going to abstain.
Trustee Bezansky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second reading of item 4.2.2, trustee development. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
In regards to this, are we going to be bringing to the board in this policy those that are going to go to other events for development? Because it reads here, it's mandatory, whatever the training mandatory is where you're allowed to go to. But it says participation board voting member and should occur at an organizational meeting. So how are we going to identify and approve? Because most of the colleges approve the meetings that you're going to. And there's a lot in here that states about trustee development and how do we get that to be brought before the board? I mean, there's a lot of concerns in this, and I'm also looking at if, also if the college sponsors, on the, what page is it? Doesn't have page, page three of it. If the college sponsors an event, that includes tickets as part of the sponsorship, the tickets will be at the discretion of the president. In the contract, in his contract, it says we all have to be equally treated and be able to fulfill our duties as to our constituents and our faculty and our support staff at the college. I think that part should be removed, that all of us should be entertained to be asked to be included in it, should be definitely included. And if we're not, protocol has been if spouses go, we are supposed to, as trustees, pay for our spouses. So I'm hoping that, because I've seen a couple of engagements where our spouses have gone, and I'm not talking about the presidents, I'm talking about any of us trustees that bring our spouses. We've always had to pay for our spouse to be at activities. And I hope that's occurring because that was part of what has always been. And I think this needs to come back and be reviewed a little bit more.
Any other comments on 1.11 policy?
I think, I think we made that clear in this.
We're ready to vote.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
No.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Bezansky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second reading of item 4.2.3, policy 1.27, committees of the board. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
My concern is this, it states that the chair can do whatever to either appoint or remove, but it doesn't tell you the reasons for removal, the criteria for removal. And I think that should be added into this policy so that we know why. It's not just whimsical that somebody can just pull you because they don't like you. I think there needs to be criteria mentioned in here so that we know that it is objective, not subjective.
I do see it here that this policy says in good standing. And I think that's pretty obvious, that if, if the chairman uses his discretion to remove a board member, it would only be because the member is not in good standing. I don't think that any chairman would say, I like you and I don't like you. I don't think we're that type of a petty board. But members do have to display proper professional behavior. And if you're in good standing, that should not be an issue.
Well, it's kind of funny, and I'll bring this back. When we started in 2023, I was never assigned to a committee. And there's been committee openings because Jake had resigned and Josh gets put into one right away, two of them. Diane's on three of them now. Michelle and I are on none. I would like to see some criteria.
There is criteria in the new policy. That's what this policy defines. Like Trustee Morales just says, there is now criteria.
There is now, but before, Jim, you never put me on a committee.
You were the president to the ICCTA.
That had nothing to do with it.
It does. It's representing this.
I did represent the school. I did represent the school.
That was a committee you were on. We then assigned alternate, a delegate and alternate.
But typically, the president of the ICCTA still does committee involvement with the school and still has a committee to sit on. So I'm just saying that, that is the typical protocol. I'm bringing that up because I think it should be brought up.
Your behavior's been egregious for years.
Wait, wait, no, stop. The policy describes what trustee in good standing means now.
Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Harris.
Yes.
Trustee Queenie.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick.
No.
Trustee Morales.
Yes.
Trustee Stan Borski.
Yes.
Trustee Bezansky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second reading of item 4.2.4, which is policy 1.40, board travel. Need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
So I guess my question is this, when you have the good standing in there, is the trustee going to be allowed to travel? Or not travel? Because then you're taking away their fiduciary responsibilities of being able to be educated. So I'm asking that question. Because I don't see that brought into here. It just says if you're good standing, you can do, you can be included and do.
So I think that comes down to the provisions it lays out on what good standing would mean for a trustee. So as long as you're meeting all the requirements of being in good standing, then you'd be eligible for travel. It would only be when a trustee was placed into a position of being not in good standing that that would come into play just to help determine what is a reasonable, like, travel expense for the person. Because if we have somebody out of good standing, we don't want to be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to send them on a travel expense.
So you would like to take away any elected official bearability to travel for development? And if they're not in the words of your understanding, good, good standing, and it's been subjective, not objective, and no due process has been involved, you feel that this is okay and due to do?
Just given that we are working to get a policy approved for good standing, yes.
I'd like to comment on that. The good standing is, is so that the, any trustee that goes away to represent the college, that they're representing the college in a positive manner, not degrading the college or any of their officials. And just what we've had in the past, we, we know the difference from good standing and not good standing. So in the future, we have something to weigh in on. This also goes with budget, et cetera. Good standing goes along with that. If you don't have it, you're, you're, you would be considered in not good standing, not, not behavior-wise, but any other qualification that you would not meet. So it's more than just behavioral.
Well, just as an FYI, none of the other community colleges in Illinois have a good standing issue. I'm just bringing that out there.
I totally get that, but what you have to understand, you know, we've been known to be the first community college for everything. And so it doesn't hurt. And it, and it doesn't hurt to be the first to establish something, just because they have, well, the ones that you're talking to are probably laughing, others are probably saying, that's what we need. So, I mean, I, I think that this is, we took a lot of time.
You're taking away our fiduciary responsibilities of being involved.
Yes, sir.
No, you're, you're still going to be eligible if you represent the college in a positive manner.
So I'd like to talk on this, too. This is trustee travel budget. This includes our ACCT trip each year. Those who are going to, whether it's Seattle or Hawaii, correct? That would all fall into there?
I believe so, yeah.
So I'm going to agree with Trustee Broderick on this. We have to strike the good standing because part of those trips are for the development. The development may be what we learn as far as personal behavior in a board meeting. There's, you know, just as an example, the chair meeting that Dr. Namua and I led this year, there's got to be some way to improve a trustee. So for this policy, and I hate to do this to the policy committee, but I almost want to see this, if it's, you know, if they're not in good standing, I still think it's our responsibility to help put them in good standing. Improve, I mean, with any position on this campus, we've always asked for, is there a way we can improve the person? Or whatever. So for this particular policy, I'm, I'm okay with removing good standing. That's just Jim speaking. You guys can, you know, vote however you want, but I'd like to see this go back in this part, either strike it now or I'm just not comfortable with that on there.
Okay.
Because we still want them going to the ACCT.
Right.
We still want them going to the actual true development events. So.
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I certainly
My five minutes, though.
I certainly, I certainly agree. I certainly agree. This is moving forward.
Yes.
Anybody that, anybody has an opportunity to show that they can behave in good, or they, they are in good standing. As, as we interact among ourselves, you know, it can indicate whether, whether our behavior is representable to, to other our organizations, ACCT, ICCTA. But to what you were saying, it, it doesn't take 50 meetings to try to get correct. And of course, our trustee has been quite a while. We didn't have a policy. We have it now. So there shouldn't be a question of how someone is to behave. There shouldn't be. I mean, we really didn't, didn't need it in the beginning because when you open the book, it clearly states how we're supposed to behave. And if we have not, then that means that's being negated, then we need to establish something further. And I think that is what this has done. We're saying moving forward. We're saying moving forward. So any new trustee comes in, they take a look at this, they know that, that, that these rules have to be abided by. I, I don't think we should remove it.
Okay.
That's just, I'm like you, Jim. That's just me. That's just Diane speaking. But no, I don't, I don't think so.
That's a slightly different interpretation than I had.
No.
So then I'm going to ask another question. In an event like the, do I have any time left? In, in the event of something like the ACCT, which we already know provides invaluable development for all of us, can we add to this that in good standing can be overridden by the vote of the board? Can the board still come back and vote as, no, I would like all people to attend? I think where we're hamstringing ourselves here by locking somebody out for whatever, I'd like to see it. We're not, we don't want to take away complete control from somebody. We want to encourage development for any oncoming or incoming board member. April, we're going to have, you know, new people. I would like to see where this can be overridden by a board vote.
I, I would agree with that because as I said, our interaction, we, we can determine that based on how we interact with each other and other places that we've gone.
Okay.
And, and we would be able to determine, well, yeah, I, I think Diane's ready or whoever the person is. I agree with, I agree with the interjection, but I don't think we should remove this.
Okay.
Can I interject one thing, too?
Yes.
I think then this would move forward for us to then, before we even make plans to go for the conventions or conferences we're going to, to bring it to the board for the board to approve the travel allotment as they normally do. This way, it's approved, then Karen can set the, the, you know, hotel, the registration, the airfare, all of that up so that we're not just saying, jump in, jump in, and all of a sudden she's, she's got to talk to somebody to find out if that person can go or not, and we don't have board time to have a board meeting. I think we should bring it before, knowing in, when is the, the initial thing is like May, so maybe in April. Bring it to, in front of the board, saying this is what we're looking for for this coming year, to go to this, to, you know, New Orleans, if that's, you know, for New Orleans next year.
May, may I speak upon this?
Yes.
So I think it might be worth backing up a split second and asking two distinct questions instead of just one. So I think the two questions we're really asking here are, can we, as a board, legally, and that's a question for the board attorney? Can we do that? And then ought we to do that? Because that's something we should be doing. The can we, can we question, again, I would leave to our board attorney to have an opinion on, but the ought we question is for the board. Good standing makes a lot of sense to me. It's something that is not in Illinois, you're right, but it is in other states. There, there is precedent for having something like this. My understanding was that travel is a privilege, not a right, for us as trustees. So to Chair's point, the encouragement of development for those members that might be in poor standing, a lot of times I find that that gets worked out typically in interpersonal conversations. Where if, let's say, Trustee Queenie does something particularly good, I call him and I say, hey, you did a good job on this. I appreciate that. If there was something that I was like, ah, maybe we shouldn't do that, I call you and I, I talk with you about it. We do that. That's like the first step when it comes to good standing, is just having those conversations with people. That's like our first layer. Our second layer is when it comes up on the board, if we have to do things like point of orders, if we have to do things like stopping people from speaking. And then we get to the third layer of the voting of someone not being in good standing. And then after that, we get further down to like censorships. There is a layer of escalation here, and that development to help that trustee be better in their goals and following our policy as written in the very front of our book of ethics, that's done along the way. It's plenty of opportunity to make sure that we adhere to those, and that's really important. So to me, not only is this good standing, I feel like this is actually quite generous. And it gives a lot of opportunity for trustees to make up on behavior and to get their, their travel privileges back. I think it's quite a fair policy and leaves a lot of room. So I, I'm kind of in support of this policy. It makes sense to me.
I am now. I just, someone pointed out to me the last sentence, a member of the board can be returned to good standing at any time following the passage of a motion for such a majority by the vote of the board.
Yes.
That satisfies my requirement and my, my ask is that.
And which is super important for, if that wasn't in there, I totally agree with you, is that there needs to be a way of coming back. But there is. You can return someone back to good standing, which is super important. So I, with that provision in there and the fact that we do have a lot of ways of double checking on trustee behavior, I'm in support of this policy. It just makes sense and it's very generous. So I think it's good policy.
Like this, make a comment?
Sure.
So trustee's fiduciary responsibility is never stripped away from us just because we cannot attend a conference. There's many topics we learn at these conferences. I've been on this board for almost 10 years now. And I do learn a couple of new things, but as far as board behavior, those are just things that, you know, your mom teaches you when you're, you know, young and the way you're being raised to be polite and have manners. So our fiduciary responsibility is never, ever So our fiduciary responsibility is never ever returned. So I agree with the way that this policy is written and I have no problem, you know, moving forward with it either.
So just so, I understand you totally, you agree with.
Yes.
With this policy and the statement at the end indicates what you said, Chairman.
I believe we're ready to vote.
Yep.
Member?
Uh, trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second reading of item 4.2.8, policy 020201, administrative contracts. Need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
My concern falls on the second paragraph.
Hold on, hold on. I thought we were doing 4.2.5 first.
Yeah.
Oh.
4.2.5.
Sorry.
So, second reading of item 4.2.5, which is policy 01.41.00, trustee development budget.
A travel budget. They're changing from development to travel budget.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
My concern falls into how it's monitored. The CFO is normally, for all the colleges in Illinois, the one that monitors anything, if there's any expenditures that they're concerned about, not the president. So I ask that the president be removed and we put the CFO in there because that is the person that is the one that is basically paying all of the bills in regards to the trustees that are going on their activities. Because he's our employee, not our, he's our employee and we're the employer. And I think the CFO should be responsible for it.
It's the same thing. If, if, uh, Karen Kissel is monitoring, she works for our president.
She works for him and she doesn't report to us. He reports to us.
Correct.
So because she is distant in the employee relation situation, she reports to him, not to us. He's our only employee. So that's why I said the CFO is the one that does it in all the colleges in Illinois.
What did, just a question. Wouldn't we want the employee who we're employing to be the one monitoring that? As they're gonna be the one reporting directly back to us? Because we don't always hear from members of the cabinet all the time, but we do hear from Dr. Numo at every meeting. It's fair critique.
Look, when, Ms. Svi?
Sure.
I tend to agree. Um, Ms. Kissel does report to the president and that is, that, that is our, um, we find out through him, but it has come through the CFO. So I think we're getting it firsthand, just not from her.
I think we're splitting hairs.
No, we've got the employer telling the, or the employee telling the employer what they can and can't do with budgets when it falls under accounting purposes for the CFO, where the other colleges do it. Otherwise, I feel that there is a high level of concern of any, um, impartialities of trustees getting funded correctly or not, or being identified as out of budget. And I think the CFO has more of an idea of what the budget's about and what the numbers are. That's my opinion.
So, right now, this is, we don't operate in either one of those modes. So currently, the process is, is our board assistant is who monitors all travel and it applies it to our board travel budget. Same thing, when it gets out of line or we're gonna have an excess expenditure in one category or another, or to determine which category it belongs in, she's already gonna come to President Numo, or in this case, says the chairperson of the board.
But the problem is with this whole thing, Jim, you've identified categories when we were gonna have an open budget, which was what the preliminaries of last year, when we were going through the budget issues. And now you've, you and, and Dr. Numo have identified how much for each thing that you can spend when.
Maureen, I wanna, no, I wanna stop that line of questioning or commenting because in May of last, or this previous year, in May, when we first presented it to you, you made a big grandstanding event and tearing it up in front of everyone and saying you were not gonna comply with it. Obviously, you haven't. That's why she kept getting bills. The rest of the board agreed to it. It came back in the budget the next month where it is spelled out, and Ms. Kissel can help me on it, it spells out where that budget goes. It also says if there's excess, it's not a slush fund. That was all approved by the board, basically based on your input from the previous where, where you thought you should have a slush fund.
It's not, it's called a slush fund. It's called a working budget.
You use it as a slush fund. You went to everything you wanted to and then represented us poorly.
Jim, that's where the mis, the misstatement is. It's not a slush fund. It's not for fun. It's for going and growing. In 2021, I got the educational award. Have any of you guys here? I go to those classes. I go to those things for educational purposes. 22 years elected, I know a lot. And I, I value that I've learned a lot through going through those classes. And those are very fundamental for us.
Then you should've known the results of tearing up a budget without ever looking at it and just telling us you weren't gonna comply with it would come back to haunt you, which it has. The board approved the budget we're following. The only step in here is I think we need to put down the fact that we do involve the board secretary that monitors these, these expenses. We do not need the CFO watching every penny we spend. Believe me, anytime the question has come up about where the money belongs and where it should've been, it goes back to the CFO anyway. But the CFO doesn't report to me. I have, I don't know if I've ever called Karen direct. I don't know if I've called any of the cabinet direct. By putting them into this policy where the chair is gonna start doing this with the CFO isn't gonna be the right answer either. The chair should continue to do the way it is, dealing with the board secretary who is watching all of our travel expenses, wherein other policies, we go to her to plan our travel expenses and reserve our hotel rooms by policy, not just showing up and charging her. So, the travel budget here is fine, other than this isn't how we're doing it at the top. The basis of it is, but involving the CFO, I think, is taking this way out of.
Well, then if you're looking at that and you're saying the secretary of the board, then maybe it should be the secretary shall monitor trustee travel instead of the president.
That's what I'm saying. That's the way we're doing it.
I wouldn't have a problem with that, though.
Okay. So, hate to do that to the policy committee, but we need to change that to the way we're actually doing it.
Change it.
So what we're saying is we'll ask for a change to say the secretary shall monitor.
I believe you mean the assistant to the board.
Your assistant.
I mean, the assistant to the board.
I got it right one of the times I said it.
Okay.
So there's a motion to approve this policy. I think you should take a vote on that. And if it's voted down, then it'll go back to policy committee and based on the comments.
So do we have to?
To change it.
Unless I withdraw the motion?
Yeah.
You have to redo the motion.
You don't have to redo the motion, you just vote it down. The board rejects it, it's gonna go back to policy and be worked on based on these comments.
Okay.
So, call it all?
We're ready to roll.
Ready to vote? Okay. Uh, trustee Morales?
No.
Trustee Queenie?
No.
Trustee Bradrick?
No.
Trustee Harris?
No.
Trustee Stamborsky?
No.
Trustee Bazinski?
No.
Motion fails.
Second reading of agenda item 4.2.8, which is policy 02.02.01, administrative contracts. And I will need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
My concern falls under the second paragraph. In order for us to be under the Open Meetings Act and the Illinois Freedom of Information Act to include the description of principal financial components of the contract and description of the action to be taken by Board of Trustees, that falls under the performance and performance criteria that we failed to, uh, put into Dr. Numo's. And I think we need to go back and make sure that this is addressed in all of the contracts so that we do not have a problem with the ICCB because the ICCB does review those to make sure that the goals and performance criteria are in the contracts.
Any other feedback or comments?
Karen, we're ready to vote.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Second reading of item 4.2.13 on the agenda, which is policy 11.0400, parking and motor vehicle codes.
Before anybody makes a motion, it's my understanding that the issue is here, there was a typographical error, a wrong offices referenced. So I believe what trustee Queenie would like to do is make a motion to send this back to committee to fix that, so it can be brought back to the board with that correction.
Yes.
So rather than somebody making a motion to approve, if you wanna make that motion.
All right. Can I get a first?
You could make the motion.
Oh, then I'll first? And make the motions?
I guess we're ready to vote on that motion.
So the motion is to send this policy back to committee?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 5.1, approval of certificate of completion agricultural sciences.
Wait, hold on. 4.3.
Approval of Board of Trustee meeting dates and times for calendar year 2025. So moved.
Is there anything we can do with regards to the January meeting? Can we move it up or down one week?
We cannot move it up.
Can we move it down?
Why?
I have a work commitment and I don't wanna be on the screen. I just wanna make sure. I'm, I'm gonna tell you ahead of time.
This one's already gone back and forth in planning, too.
We could have maybe on workshop.
Yeah, well, we have, we have a, if we move it back, then we have back-to-back meetings a week apart for our board meeting and then workshop. Is there already is a workshop on the 29th?
So are we in discussion on this? Is the board willing to move this or available to move this?
Remind me which date we're moving it to?
It would end up going from the 15th to the 22nd. Is that what you said?
I'm all right with it? I'm, I'm sure with it.
I have, I have, I have a conflict.
Okay.
You have a conflict on the first date or the second date?
Second.
The second. Okay, so either way, we have someone that has a conflict.
So you say the 22nd, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I'm sorry. I guess I can leave. Yeah. I can do the second one.
22nd or 15th?
Right now, the motion is to approve them as, as they are in the book.
I have a conflict on the 22nd also.
Actually, I have a conflict on the 15th.
15.
Yeah.
If I had to choose, I prefer the 22nd. But, I mean, that's just me. We're talking, it's January 15th, right?
It's scheduled for the 15th.
Yeah.
And you're not available on the 22nd.
I say we, whoever has, can't be here, can't be here. I mean, we're not gonna fit everybody's schedule and we can try to go virtual if, if it's allowed.
Are we, we're allowed to, we're just not allowed to vote virtually, right?
No, I think so.
No, if, if you're not here, you can still vote, but you do not count toward the quorum. And you have to meet one of the reasons for, that, that's allowed under the statute.
Which includes work, and that's what I'm for.
Correct. Includes work, childcare issues, things like that. Illness.
Karen, then we're ready to vote.
Okay. Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 5.1, approval of certificate of completion of agricultural sciences.
That's part of the consent agenda. That was approved. On section six.
It's indicated it's under consent.
So, I have two asterisks in front of it.
The official one, yeah, yours is on the, the official one in the book has it on consent.
Does it has consent? Okay.
If you want to, go ahead and make the motion to cover it, you're fine.
I wanna keep us out of legal problems. If somebody, you know, like myself, who didn't think this was part of the consent agenda.
Okay, go ahead. We can go through a new motion just to be sure.
5.1?
So moved.
Second.
If no discussion, we can take a vote?
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Same for item 5.2, approval of certificate of completion, precision agriculture.
So moved. Second.
Ready to vote.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Yes.
Trustee Stamborsky?
Yes.
Trustee Queenie?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 6.1, the student trustee report. Ryan Queenie.
Hello, there we go. So this is the, my name is Ryan Queenie, my pronouns are they/them. This is the student trustee report for December 11th. I don't have a lot for you. I'm just gonna highlight a few recent campus happenings over the last week. So they had the PB and J and therapy dogs and stress relief event on the JJC main campus bridge on the 9th and 10th. And then, as Dr. Numo was mentioning earlier, last night, JJC did hold the World AIDS Day drag show in the JJC main campus theater from, um, which was a wonderful event that raised awareness around, um, the people who are living with HIV and AIDS. And then, of course, today, Innervar City Christian Fellowship was serving hot chocolate and coffee for finals week in the JJC Cafe Curve. Then, there's really not much coming up. It's finals for students. So we have, uh, Thursday, the nurse pitting ceremony in Lower J Building at 4 o'clock. And then, and I'm hoping to see everybody there. Foster Palooza on the 13th. Main campus, come in A Building. I'll be helping checking in volunteers, so come find me that day and I'll help find something. We can all help to support the community together because as, you know, Margot. We can all help to support the community together because as, you know, Margot Wonderwood puts this event together with, along with a bunch of staff around JJC, like Lori Johnson and just Maria, and everybody comes together to really support our foster families and our, you know, communities that are in need during the holiday season. And then, of course, winter break is happening from the 20th till the 6th. So with that, I'm just going to say happy holidays to everybody. And for everybody left taking finals, good luck on your finals. But I'm going to actually yield back my time at this point because I don't have too much to report back. So thank you.
Item 6.2, representative to the ICCTA slash ACCT trustee Harris.
Okay, thank you very much. The ICCTA met on November 14th through the 15th in Schaumburg. And as we usually do, you know, we have our roundtable discussion. We have several topics to choose from. And this time, we focused on rethinking the DEI policies and how the colleges could adjust to making changes if need be. And what the state of DEI, what is the state of the DEI on your campus and how the board is able to support DEI. And we just shared, you know, some of the things that JJC had done. And then that was one topic. Some of the other colleges had changed their, the names so they could make it more interactive, such as I think DuPage Township changed theirs to data inform governance. So it's supposed to be more accepted and so, just to be more inclusive. So a lot of them made changes to their, to their titles. And then we talked about how our college defines student success and what role does the board play in supporting it. And we determined that we focus on the students' goals and what they come into the college for. That was mainly what we focused on. And the graduation rate, a lot of the colleges agreed on that. They all were in agreement to that. And then another topic about hiring interim president and how, how to divert the time and how to save on the budget so that you won't have to overspend. So that's just kind of some of the things we talked about. They also talked about changing the rules so that a lot of the conversation and the discussing, discussions would be confidential. So we'll see how that goes with our next meeting. And also, the ICC Legislative Committee, they did approve their initiative. So it's quite lengthy. So if anybody wants to take a look at it, I'll be glad to provide a copy of it for Karen to present to everybody. And hmm, let's see. That, that, that's, that's kind of about it. We, like I say, the roundtable is usually our major event in all of the colleges from the state of Illinois. We get together and talk about ways to increase enrollment and ways to keep our budgets down. But the overall importance is to getting the students in and out again at the least cost. So that's, that's it for ICCTA. Should I report on ACCT as well?
Sure.
And that's, we, did we report since we were in Seattle? I think I did.
We did, but.
Yeah. So, well, okay, so I'd like to report that.
So you can go right into your trustee report if you'd like.
Oh, okay. All right.
How much time?
Says three minutes, but for the trustee report, says three minutes on the agenda.
I can do that.
Could we extend it to five minutes for people to give reports back?
Well, this is about the ACCT.
Okay.
It's still daylight. That's a, you know.
I know. Okay, since we did, I did the report on ACCT last month, I won't reiterate that again. But I, I will say, just speaking in terms of ICCTA, our pres, our new president, Dr. Bishop Dunne, presented an award to Maureen as the outgoing president with emeritus status. So she'll still be involved with the ICCTA. So that was a kind of emotional, I guess, moment for, for trustee Broderick. So.
Invention, the amount, invention, the amount of JJC.
Yeah. And that we were proud to see her accepted to represent JJC. Okay, now trustee report, trustee update. Yeah, I guess this is my moment to share that the ACCT usually seeks individuals to work on specific committees. They have diversity, equity and inclusion, finance and audit, governance and bylaws, member communication and education and public policy and advocacy. And they've been focused on seeking candidates to serve. It is a one-year term. And the submission date was November 1st. And I was going through the information that they sent us and I was happy to send in my nomination form. And with the support of JJC, I was nominated to serve on the Public Policy Committee on the national level. So I'm excited about that and I hope that you guys are too. And I look forward to serving for look forward to serving for the year 2425 and bringing back what we have for the national level and still bragging about JJC safety and the first of everything. So thank you very much for the, I appreciate the nominate. I'm glad to put in the nomination and glad to be accepted. So that's, that's all I have.
Trustee Broderick.
I'll identify a Seattle, Washington ACCT conference. Thought the openings general session about AI was extremely important to hear about from Melissa Lowey, who's the chief academic officer, who went through all of the teacher-student relationships with AI. The next one I went, the next session I went to was building a strong partnership through board assessment and evaluation. The evaluation elements are president self-assessment of goal attainment, self-assessment of performance related to the board evaluation categories and board evaluation of leadership. So we need to have the performance criteria identified, college missions and goals, the college strategic plan, the president's goals and priorities, and board president relationships and leaderships involved in this, which we're missing. And we need to include that. It was a very informative one. It talked about how we align to make the president's position better by us all performing and having goals, both for us and aligning with the president with his goals. The next one I went to is cultivating excellence in the board president relationships. It was best practices, policies control everything about the college, and it talks about how the elements of accountability, direction and control are the job, jobs of board. All of these elements need to be present to have an effective and functional board, which we need to be working on to be totally functional. The board governs as the voice of the owners. They serve as the connection between the owners and management, have the authority only as a body, not as individuals to follow. And the board needs to be involved in policy and governance without meddling or rubber stamping. All board members, no matter what the executive status of the member, are all equal and should be treated equally by the president. All trustees should be comfortable in working with the president. Board governance should clearly identify the board's responsibilities as if it should be to the president's responsibilities. Board policy is effective if it is properly documenting the issues at hand so that it doesn't create any complicated relationships between trustees and the president. Then I went to the conference of the role of the trustee for an effective board governance, which was highly, I mean, very good. It dealt with our fiduciary responsibilities and key issues focused on effective board and how the board must work together. And the chair is ultimately responsible for working with all the personalities and working to unite the board for better board governance. The one that I found most interesting that I went to was the one about dual credit, moving from tactical to strategical dual enrollment management, successful pitfalls, lessons learned, and moving forward. This showed us, this was the college of, the community college in California. It showed how they develop pathways so that all of the counselors in the high school levels knew how to show their students what pathways they needed to be going towards, what courses and what their end-all would be with the partnerships of the companies that they're engaged with, with the colleges. It worked really well. It showed that they increased their funding by a significant amount because of the way they handled this. And that was attributed to the fact that they had several paths identified and the students were very excited to know which way they had to go for either a certification, for a bachelor's or associate's degree, or how to obtain their bachelor's degree. And one more thing I'm going to bring into picture besides that was I was at a comp, or at the field, the science, field museum of science and industry this past weekend. And it's funny, I was, I went up to the third floor, which had an airline pilots group showing us how to pilot a plane and everything. We had six pilots up there, three that are graduates from JJC and that went on to Lewis for their, for their degrees in aviation. They all said there's a shortage of pilots right now. And I know when we were talking about Morris and the Morris Aviation Center out there, they thought we should do more with the education to get more airline pilots lined up. So here's the card for that, for the airline pilots. I'm going to pass on to Dr. Namo. I thought it was very good that they related to the fact that when I said I was from Joliet and I was on the board because I had my jersey on that said JJC and they go, you go to JJC, I sit down on the board. And they were like, we were there, we went to school there, we got our associate's degree. And they were very excited to say that they are short-staffed of pilots and they're looking for more pilots. Thank you.
Trustee Morales.
Sure, thank you so much. First of all, I want to wish everybody a very happy holiday as we get ready to almost adjourn this meeting. I just want to thank again Dr. Namo because from Joliet Township, we do sponsor, we have, the township has the mentality of reinvesting in the community just because our school system has, has suffered so much disinvestment and, you know, you take away art, you take away music, you take away recess. So many things are taken away and it, it leaves the kids with really nothing. So from a small government perspective, I know that their vision is to continue to reinvest and give back. And we help organizations that work directly with kids and, you know, giving, giving back to them like we, like we do with Mr. Eric Groves, who is the CEO of the organization called Fighting Chance. And when Brenda said to me, you know, we, we, our kids, in order for them to continue or to stay motivated, we help them with tutoring. Do you have any tutoring that you can offer? And we look into that. And I called Dr. Namo and I know he's working on that. And that's another relationship that we're working on to make sure that the kids are getting tutoring because that's an important component of them being able to participate, is keeping their academics up. So when we have people like Mr. Eric Groves that invests his time in a non-for-profit back into our kids that have suffered so much disinvestment and then having a president that gives that priority, I am just so thankful that you were there and that you jumped on that and that you're working on getting the students, Eric Groves Fighting Chance students, the tutoring that they need. So thank you for that. Thank you. That's all for me. Thank you.
Trustee Stamborski.
Hello, everybody, and happy holidays. And to all the students out there, happy finals, though I wouldn't use the word happy necessarily always. But I'm glad to be here and I was hoping to take a minute just to talk about, or more than a minute, to talk about the ACCT conference in Seattle. So the Washington State is wonderful. Last time I was there, I was, I hiked 10 miles a day, slept in a tent and got rained on. So it was a nice upgrade of an experience going in, going to conferences. So there was a bunch of different of events that I ended up going to. And I just wanted to highlight one or two or three or four interesting ones that I felt actually I got something out of. So the stuff that I really liked was there was a policy, there was a event called Statistics-Based Governance, which to me sounded awesome. I love that. So we ended up going. I ended up listening. And most of it is just about taking as much data as you can as an institution, making sure that you're tracking numbers going in and going out, even stuff that you might not think is that important. Sometimes you down the road want a number and you're like, oh, shoot, you know, we've kept numbers on this for the last 10 years. So that's super important for forward thinking and risk management, which was my favorite. I'll go into it in a second. The next one is I went to board governance. I think, I think trustee Broderick was there. I think trustee Wazinski was there. Again, I won't, I don't have to go, re-go over the details. He did an excellent job, but it was mostly about the relationship between the president and the board, how it operates as a whole. Another one that was very similar to that was procedure and, and the governance of the board. It was actually pretty close in terms of its content. And finally, to risk management or risk assessment, which I thought was probably the most, at least striking to me session that I went to. So what they did was they kind of gave us a graph. And on your X axis, you had your probability of something happening. On your Y axis, you had impact. So you have like high probability, low impact events, like numbers getting put in wrong for like a student signing up for classes. Like that, that can happen. And there are things that sometimes you just work through procedurally. There are high impact, low probability events. So like a meteor hitting the college, which would be, the impact would be about three or four miles. The probability is extremely low. So it's stuff like that, that they're like, you don't have to worry about this necessarily. Or this is stuff like insurance takes care of. Here's the stuff that administration worries about. And the largest one they were talking about is siloing. The idea that risk management is a constant, ongoing process where everybody needs to kind of be in the loop as to what's going on. Like a assembly line. You want to make sure that you know what the guy next to you is doing. So that way, you kind of have an idea what the whole system in general is, how it's functioning. So to get to the, really to the kernel of the onion here on the issue, they peel back that it's one of the most important things for risk management is making sure that there's no consequence for identification of it. If somebody comes up to the board and says, hey, here's a risk that we didn't see before and we'd like to bring it to the attention of the president or the board, that's something where we go, awesome, sweet. I'm glad we identified it. Instead of focusing on the negative aspect of how much risk it might put us out. The fact is, we identify it and we move forward with it, which is extremely important. The, the silo information is extremely important because that's something like intelligence services do. So like the CIA, where they don't want their agents knowing everything about the organization in case they get caught. We're not the CIA. Silos are bad. And also onions don't have kernels. So that was something else I learned at the ACCT conference. Again, happy holidays to everybody. Happy finals for the best that you can. And that will be it for me. Thank you very much. So I know I kind of gave a, a report of my ICC, or the trip to Seattle, which I was a part of last month. So I'm just going to quickly highlight the sessions I attended, which were the how trustees can support presidents as people first and professionals second. I also attended the student trustee special session advisory committee meeting while I was there in addition to the national, state and regional view of how community college baccalaureate degrees are meeting workforce needs. I also attended a session on clean energy funding, which talked about different strategies community colleges can engage in with the federal government and the Inflation Reduction Act to help cover costs for the buildings they're trying to put together. And then I also was able to stop into the AI lab at the conference, which I hope everybody had, kind of had a chance to stop and talk with them there. I know I spent time talking about the, the implementation of AI in advising spaces in community college and how that may serve benefit to students in getting some of those questions that people get caught up in when they're first enrolling, just get those answered. And then also, I attended a session on homelessness and housing insecurity among community college students, which I'm going to be taking some of that knowledge back in the spring into my internship with the Office of Student Rights here, working with them on their housing and homelessness and security, or grant they have. Then also, I spent a time at the session, which talked about building advocacy capacities with students, employees and trustees. And then I don't have a bunch of updates, other than I'm really glad I see a few students. I think I see a few students in our audience still who have been here the whole meeting. So thank you again for coming out. And just happy holidays. And again, good luck with the rest of the finals you have to take. So with that, I yield back my time. Thank you.
So I'd like to join in with everyone, just wishing everyone a happy holidays. This time of the year is special for all of us. It gives us a chance to meet up with family. I know there's a lot of families that only get together at Christmas. There's a lot of excitement with students. And I know trustee Harris mentioned student goals. One of you just mentioned, you know, happy finals. We have to also recognize there's some stress in the hallways going on. There's some stress in the room for adults and everything they're trying to catch up with. We want to certainly recognize student success is when we see it in the hallway. We are happy when our students come to the board meeting. They're part of our family. But what I want to remind everyone is, is we now have a couple of weeks where we get to restore and remind ourselves of what our actual purpose is with JJC, what we're for, what we're supposed to represent and who we are supposed to be supporting. And it's the students. So take a couple of weeks and just remember what our actual purpose here is. It's nothing, it's nothing short of making sure that the students succeed when they leave here. So with that, happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everyone, and we look forward to seeing you next year.
Thank you.
Dr. Namuwa, do you have anything?
I've said enough, Chairman. Happy holidays. I'm not going to hold people back from adjourning a meeting.
Item isn't my favorite, but it's where the chair calls for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Usually it doesn't answer that quick, but.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? We're adjourned at 3:07.